Hallelujah, what a blessing. What a blessing, child of God. Wow, it's a blessed new day and God has been faithful. Amen. I want to especially welcome you to this special session. That we about to have, and I just believe that it's gonna be a blessing to you. And that you will be convicted and helped by the Lord, hallelujah. And so this is just um a series where we're gonna have a couple of teachings. Um to edify us, to build us. Towards the direction that God wants us to go, hallelujah. Now, a quick one, if you've not subscribed, please do what to subscribe. And then also um make sure you like the video. Come on, if you're not liking it, then I mean, what are you saying, you know? If you like what we are doing, you would like the video. If you like what God is doing, you would like the video, it's as simple as that, so. Just do what to like the video. Um and then do what to share the link to. Not just a couple of people, but as many people as possible, hallelujah. Alright, wanna pray, let us pray. Father, thank you for today. Thank you for this incredible, wonderful opportunity to sit at your feet. And to hear all the words of life you have for us. You said to us, Lord Jesus, that the words you speak, they are spirit and life. Minister to us like never before. In the mighty name of Jesus, we have prayed. And let God's people shout, hallelujah, 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 what a blessing. Amen. And so beloved of God, I'm recording. From somewhere, somewhere, hallelujah. And the Lord just impressed on my heart that when you get here, make sure you do these tapes. And these teachings for the body of Christ. And the people of Penio, the Penio family, the Penio nation, hallelujah. And so today we are talking about why partner? Why partner, hallelujah? Why partner? Amen. So, um. Why partner? I wanna make sure that everything is okay. Alright, so we are looking at why partner, hallelujah. And this is very important, this is very important, amen. And to all believers, to all believers, trust me, to all believers, to every leader, every pastor. Every church member, whoever you are, whatever you are, whatever you do in the church, this is a critical subject for you. And you need to understand so that you can do your best as God demands of you, hallelujah. So why partner? And what I'm gonna share with you are things that the Lord personally shared with me. And so it's from the Lord, amen. Now, why partner? First of all, the word partner is P A R T N E R, okay? P A R T N E R, which is partner, part, and then na. So first of all, the word partner, and the Lord said this to me. That whenever you say you are partnering or you are a partner. You know, you are saying you are a part of whatever the Lord is doing. You are a part of whatever the Lord is doing, that's the basic concept. When you say partner, let's partner, we have partnership service, and this Sunday we have partnership service. You know, you are saying that you are a part of what the Lord is doing, you want to be a part. Think about it, you being a part of what God is doing, and there's an opportunity. And a privilege to us all that God is extending to everybody. That hey, come and be a part of what I'm doing, decide to be a part of what I'm doing. Is it the church I'm building? Decide to be a part of what I'm doing. Amen, is it something, a development in the kingdom, in the church? A physical building, a land we are buying, come and be a part of what we are doing. Come and be a part of what I am doing through my people. You know, Jesus said in the book of Matthew, he said, I will build my church. And the gates of hell shall not prevail against it. I will build my church. What does that mean? That means that whatever the church is doing towards building. Towards development, towards advancement, it is not a church, it is Jesus through the church. It is not a pastor, it's not the pastor's plans, it's not, you know, it can be the pastor's desire. But that is actually Jesus who has planted that desire in the heart of the pastor, oh. The Bible says in Romans chapter five, he says that the love of Christ is shared abroad in our hearts by the Holy Spirit. Now that word love talks about desire, the desire of Christ, the desire of things pertaining to Christ. The desire of the will of God, the desire of the purposes of God. So I can have a desire that let's build for God, let's build, let's build. Oh, okay, you, you become a shepherd, let's start shepherding. Let's win some souls, let's grow their church. And I desired it, but the truth of the matter is, it is God's desire shared abroad. You know, the word abroad is word overflowing and abandoned to all limits, breaking the limit. So God shares his desire in our hearts and makes the desire begin to overflow. How do you know when God's desire is overflowing in your heart? One of the keys is when you are restless about it, you know, like whenever you sleep, it's just coming. Whatever you are doing, it just keeps coming, it means it's overflowing in your heart, it's bubbling up. You know, imagine you are boiling water with a shot lid. And it's bubbling so much that sometimes, you know, you you begin to see that the water is just pouring over. Amen, it's boiling hot, hallelujah, it's boiling hot. In your spirit, it's boiling hot in your heart, the desire of God. Another key is when it comes on your lips. It overflows so much that you don't find it on your lips. What does the scripture tell us? It says that out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speak it. So when there's an abundance, the the proof that something is abundant in your heart is when it comes out of your mouth. Do you see, when it's overflowing in your heart, it comes out. You know, from your mouth, it is on your lips, you just begin to talk about it, you begin to talk about it, you begin to talk about it. You begin to talk about it, you know, you can have a craving for food. But the proof that you just can't do anything about a craving, the proof that this craving is too much. Is when you start saying it, Charlie, I feel like eating beans, I feel like eating beans, I feel like eating beans. Charlie, wouldn't I get beans to buy anywhere? Do you know where I can get beans to buy? Do you know where I can get, in fact, even if it's expensive, even if it's expensive, I'll buy it, I'll pay for it. Now, why would you talk like that? Is a proof that the thing is overflowing in your heart, is abundant in your heart. Hallelujah. So God plants his desire in our hearts. In an overflowing manner. Do you see? And so I just want you to understand that, you know, these are the words of God to us, is the will of God to us. Partner, partner with God, partner with him. In what the ministry is doing, the vision of the ministry, you need to understand, it's Jesus. It's not about the ministry, it's Jesus, it's I will build. And yet, he has never physically come down to even lay a brick or a block, yet it says, I will build. What does that mean? That means that we are going to do the things, you know? We will come up with the plans, the strategies, winning the souls here and there, but it is him doing it through us. It is his desire, it is his power, oh, it's not by might, it's not by power. But by my spirit. So whatever we are doing, it's not by our strength, it's not by our intellect, it is by his spirit. And the Holy Spirit is associated with the power of God. Do you remember the book of Acts? Acts, chapter one, verse eight, you shall receive power, what? After the Holy Ghost or after the Holy Spirit shall come upon you. Power, Holy Spirit. So when he says, it's not by your might, it's not by your power, but by my spirit. He's saying, it is by my empowerment. So whatever we do pertaining to church, pertaining to the kingdom, the work of God. It is by his empowerment, he empowers us. Somebody, God is empowering you in the name of Jesus. I see the Lord in the realm, the spirit empowering somebody. Receive divine empowerment to partner with God, hallelujah, amen. Now, another way you can define partner. Partner, to partner, is also from the concept to part, to part. Amen. And to part, when you check the dictionary, Cambridge and the others. To part means um to share in, to share in. To an important degree. To share in to an important degree. So then it's not just about the amount. Or the size of your partnering, but the extent. The extent, you know, sometimes we partner once and then that is it. Cause we partnered something huge, something significant, something fantastic, do you see? It's not just about that, it's not just about the act, it's about the extent, the journey. The journey. Now yesterday, I was blessed to be in fellowship with my father and the Lord. And he was sharing me something that he learned or something the Lord ministered to him through someone. And he said, a giving is a journey. And he's just like, you know, you are leaving um. A crumble to every, okay? A crumble to every, and then you get to Ligon, and then you just stop. Now, you've done a great thing, you've done, you've done so much, but you you just stopped. You've not reached every, you just stopped at Ligon, you've not reached every. It's a journey, you need to finish the journey, you need to go to the end. You don't just say, I've done my bit, I've done some, so let somebody come and continue. It's a journey for each and every one of us, it's a journey. What it means is that you don't just partner once, or you give once, or you contribute, contribute once, no. It's it's a journey to an important degree, an extent, an extent. So you do it, do it well, do extra, do further, do to the end, you don't just do once and you stop. That means to sharing, if you are sharing in, it's to the end, it's to a great extent. You go all out, not some out, all out, hallelujah. And this word sharing reminds me of an instance in scripture, I want us to look at something. Numbers, chapter eleven. So just open your bibles, um. Numbers, chapter eleven, let's look at the N I V, okay? So um numbers, chapter eleven. Verse sixteen. Numbers, chapter eleven, verse sixteen. Are you there? If you are there, hallelujah, come on. If you are there, give me a wave. Okay, so numbers, chapter eleven, verse sixteen. Why partner? Isn't it fantastic? Why partner? Wow. I'm blessed already, I don't know about you, but I'm blessed. Okay, it says, the Lord said to Moses, bring me seventy of Israel's elders. Who are known to you as leaders and officials among the people. Have them come to the terms of the meeting that they may stand there with you. Verse seventeen, I will come down and speak with you there. And I will take some of the power of the spirit that is on you and put it on them. They will share. They will share the burden of the people with you. So that you will not have to carry it alone. They will share. The burden of the people with you, so that you will not have to carry it alone. Do you see that? They were sharing the burden. The burden, you know, the burden does not just, doesn't necessarily mean like a worry. Or a load or a weight, the burden can just be the visions of God. The plans of God, the purposes of God, they will share. The burden with you, they will partner. They would partner. They will share the burden with you so that you will not have to. Do you see, carry it alone. This is why you have to partner, cause as you partner, you share. You share, you become a sharer in God's vision, you become a sharer in God's agenda. Do you know what it means? What a privilege, think about it. If not for this opportunity, how on earth would you be able to share? God's burden, sharing God's vision, what an opportunity. What a privilege to be a part of what God is doing, amen. Amen, so that you will not have to carry it alone, you know, sometimes we leave everything on our shoulders. And the head of the pastor. Are you not the one that God spoke to? I know the one that said, God said this, are you not the one that, yes, but come on. Why are you watching your pastor struggle? Why are you watching your pastor sweat? Can't you? Be a part and take away the sweat and the struggle and the pain? Why are you allowing him to carry it all alone? It's time to partner. It's time to partner, and this is why you partner. This is why you partner. Can I show you a scripture in Luke chapter five? Luke chapter five. Luke chapter five. Now, this is a classic example of partnership. Amen. So, um. We can read, um, let's read maybe. Message. Message Bible. Or we can read maybe the Good News Translation. I'm looking for just a simple English Bible we can all read. So let's just read a Good News Translation. Okay. Alright, now, watch this. It is one day Jesus was standing on the shore of Lake Ganeseret. While the people pushed their way, the people pushed their way. The people pushed their way um up up to him to listen to the word of God, amen. Now, look at King James. Or New King James. So it was as the multitude pressed about him to hear the word of God. To hear the word of God. The multitude pressed. Okay, I think this is better. The multitude pressed about him to hear the word of God, that he stood by the lake of Ganeseret. And saw two boats standing by the lake, but a fisherman had gone from them and were washing their nets. Then he got into one of the boats, which was Simon's, and asked him to put out a little from the land. And he sat down and taught the multitudes from the boat. So over here, you know, there was a need, and the need was that the people needed to hear the word of God. Now, this is Jesus, but the people need to hear the word of God. So what did he do? He saw a boat, chose the boat, and entered into the boat. Now, mind you, the boat was for somebody, and it was for Simon. So there was a need, but you see, there was a requirement to fulfill the need. The need was that the word of God would be heard, the need was that the word of God would be preached properly, adequately. Effectively, amen. But then there had to be a partnership between Jesus and Simon. Simon bringing his boat. To partner with Jesus so that the need could be met. This is a classic example of partnership. Whatever you have in your hand is your boat. Whatever you have in your hand is your boat. It could be money, whatever amount it is, it's your boat. Especially this Sunday partnership service, whatever that you have is your boat. But you see, imagine the boat was a broken boat. Imagine it was a boat that was not properly functioning, the need will not have been met. You know, sometimes we partner, sometimes we give, and it's this broken giving. You know, we break it, broken given, broken given, broken effort. And you've done something, but is it adequate enough? To, you know, fulfill the need effectively? Yes or no? It's up to you to answer. And so this boat was for Simon, and the Bible says in the verse four that when he had stopped speaking. In another sense, when Jesus had fulfilled the need by virtue of partnership. He said to Simon, launch out into the deep and let down your nets for a catch. So Peter had partnered, Simon had partnered, and out of his partnership, he yielded what? Prophetic directions, revelations, visions, it opened a window for prosperity. It opened a window for things to work in his life. Now, look at it, he said in the verse five, he said, but Simon answered and said to him, master, we have toiled all night and caught nothing. Nevertheless, at your word, I will let down the net, that means that things are not working in my life. Yes, there are certain opportunities we need, but it's not coming, certain jobs is not coming, but guess what? When he partnered with Jesus, a window opened, a prophetic window opened, an opportunity opened. Malachi three, he said, prove me, and will I not open the windows of heaven? One of the key things that your partnership does, it opens the windows of heaven for you. It opens a window, it opens an opportunity, it might not necessarily bring you money directly. But you see, it opens a window that when taken advantage of, you yield results, you step into prosperity. You enjoy sufficiency, satisfaction, proficiency, provision, divine supply. Abundance, never wanting anything, never lacking, hallelujah. And that's what happened, and he said, look, we've caught nothing, we've toiled all night. All night, all night. Think about it, the night is basically when fishermen go to fishing. It's like a successful window for them. And he's saying, now, look, we've toiled all night, it means that even when things look promising, we've tried and tried, nothing is working. But nevertheless, at your word. Amen. And you know, the Bible tells us in the verse six that when they followed, when he listened to Jesus. He had a great catch. He had a great catch, it says they caught a great number of fish. They caught a great number of fish, so that brought him what prosperity by partnership. Prosperity by partnership, divine overflow, divine abundance, beloved of God, this is what happens when you partner. This is what happens when you partner. Isn't it amazing that in the verse, in the chapter five, we are talking about partnership? But when you go to the chapter six, you know, Jesus said in the verse thirty-eight. Given, it shall be given unto you. Good measure pressed down, shaken together, run over, will be put into your account, into your bosom. And it says that whatever amount you give will determine the amount you get, the N L T version. In the chapter five, we are talking about partnership. In the chapter six, it said, whatever you give will determine the amount you get. Whatever you give will determine the amount you get. Look at it, Peter partnered a boat, a boat. And what's the boat meant for? It's for catching fish, and that is what he had, a great catch. Because of what he gave, what he partnered with. Whatever you give, so even talking about the amount you give. You don't just say, well, partnership service, I didn't hear about it early, so I'm just gonna give, you know, my two cents. You're gonna get two cents, you're gonna get a cent result. But when you give something beautiful, when you partner with the Lord, you learn to partner. And as we've learned, it's not, partnership is not once, it's to an extent, it means consistently, continuously. Or continually, hallelujah, hallelujah, amen. I pray in the name of Jesus that from today, your giving will work, your giving will speak for you. Your partnership will speak for you, as you partner with the Lord, you are stepping into prosperity. Windows are opening for you, divine opportunities are opening for you. In the name of Jesus, somebody is getting blessed, even after partnering, after releasing that seed, you are getting blessed. Hallelujah. Now, let me end with this. How to get blessed by partnering? How to get blessed by partnering? The very first thing that we need to know, okay, is that first of all. You must be interested. You have to be interested. You have to be interested. Are you here? You have to be interested because you see. Many a times, people are not interested. And so because they are not interested, they do things like a ritual. Like, I'm not interested about what we are about to do, Partnership Service. I'm not interested in this partnering thing I'm coming to do. So, well, it, it has been announced, we just have to do it. They just do it like a ritual. And so because of that, what they give, what they partner, is not so interesting. How interested you are will determine how interesting your giving will be. How interested you are will determine how interesting your partnering, your partnership will be. Is it something interesting? Is it something fantastic or minimal? Is it something mind-blowing, something wonderful, something to write home about, or it's what a shock? You know, certain givings, we call them what a shock. And you see, we are not just talking about the amount, but even the approach, the attitude, how you go about it. Amen. And can I tell you something? When you are interested, God will give you seeds to sow. Yeah. When you are interested, God will give you seeds to sow. Second Corinthians, chapter nine, verse ten. Second Corinthians, chapter nine, verse ten. Look at it. It says, "Now may he who supplies seed to the sower." And the word "he" is capital H. You can check, um, New King James Version, you see that. Now may he who supplies seed to the sower. God supplies. I said, God supplies. God gives seeds to sow. Yeah. King James says, "He who ministers, who ministers, seeds to sow." And bread for food. He said, "May he supply and multiply." It's the reason why people don't see the fruitfulness of their given. Is because they don't allow God to supply. They just give, like, um, just give. But you see, when you give room for God, to even tell you the amount to give. And you learn to trust God, maybe God says, "Give a thousand," and maybe that's all you have. But you learn to trust God. What you are doing is that you are activating his supply. You are activating his supply. So God's supply is not necessarily that money will come for you to give. But it could even be the money you already have, and that money becomes his supply. Now. What is the point? What is the, what is the outcome? It says, "Supply and multiply the seed." Supply and multiply the seed you have sown. And increase the fruits. So. It could be even what you have, and that can be his supply, because you now say, "Lord, I'm entrusting into your hands." Now, if you make it his supply, he will multiply. But you see, when it's not his supply, nothing multiplies. You just do it, nothing multiplies. But when you make it his supply by presenting to him, by, by saying, "Lord, this is what I want to give. Lord, what do you want to give? Lord, speak to me, how much you, I want to look beyond the fifties and the hundreds and the two hundreds. Lord." You know, it becomes his supply. When you engage him and you involve him, it becomes his supply. In fact, I was going to say fun fact, but maybe fun fact, what you claim is yours was his supply. Whatever you say, "It's my last money, it's my last this," it was his supply. He says, "The silver and gold, they are mine." That means that whatever money you ever get, as long as you are on earth, even if it's one seedie, it is God's supply to you. And so that's what I'm trying to tell you. You see, it is already his supply, but you see, he wants you to acknowledge that it is a supply. How? When you involve him, when you engage him, when you present it to him, when you trust him. So it's not just trusting God to bring money to sow. But trusting God that even if I sow what I have, trusting God that what I have is his supply, and it is his. It is his. It is his. You know, we don't trust people for what they can do, we trust them for who they are. So when we say trusting God, it's not, okay, uh, you know that if I give this thing, you know, it will come back very soon. Or, no, I'm trusting God for who he is. And if you're able to trust him for who he is, you would experience what he can do. Do you get it? You'd experience what he can do. And what, what can he do? Multiply and increase your fruit. Multiply and increase your fruit. Hallelujah. Multiply and increase your fruit. Hallelujah. Multiply and increase your food. Now, this happens when you are interested. When you build interest. Maybe there is a window that has been opened for you to give, for you to partner, for you to present a seed. No, you are interested. You are so interested. Oh, God, I want to do this. I need to do this. Not you being unconcerned and then last minute you do something. It doesn't work. It doesn't work that way. But you are so interested. Wow. Partnership. Partner. I need to partner. You're so interested. Okay, I'm gonna give this beyond the ordinary, beyond the ordinary. It has to be something interesting. That is what proves you are interested. It has to be something interesting, something big, something nice, something fantastic. It has to be something interesting. Amen. Now, how do you prove your interest? I'm gonna give us number one, and then we have a part two very soon. What do you think? What do you think? There's a time limit, I don't want us to exceed. So what do you think? So, number one, how do you prove your interest? How do you prove your interest? Let's read, um. From the verse one, Second Corinthians, chapter nine, from the verse one. Look at it. Now, I'm reading from New King James. Now, concerning the ministry into the saints. Uh, let, let's read, um. Let's read. Which version should you read, guys? Okay, so let's just read the N L T. Or we could look at, let's look at this and see something. Okay, let's read the N L T, okay. "I really don't need to write to you about this ministry of giving for the believers in Jerusalem. For I know it's a ministry of giving. Partnering is a ministry of giving. First of all, it's a ministry. And we don't do ministry anyhow. We don't do it anyhow. No, it's a ministry. It's a ministry, ministry of giving. Says, "For I know how eager you are to help, and I have been boasting to churches in Macedonia that you in Greece were ready to send an offering a year ago. In fact, it was your enthusiasm that stirred up many of the Macedonian believers to begin giving. But I'm sending these brothers to be sure you really are ready." So readiness. How do I prove that I'm interested? Readiness, the readiness to do it, the readiness to partner. How do you get ready? You don't get ready when things are, are, are ready. You get ready by getting ready. You get ready by readying yourself. Get, it's not that, well, this is not ready, that is not ready. No. You get ready by getting ready, and when you get ready, things become ready. That is how it is. You don't wait for things, no, you make it ready by getting ready. So readiness, talking about willingness. Look at it, you spoke about enthusiasm. That is proof that you are interested, enthusiasm. Do you see? Yeah. What do you think? Beautiful. Beautiful. Hallelujah. Look at verse four, "We will be embarrassed, not to mention your own embarrassment. If some Macedonian believers came with me and found that you weren't ready. After all that I have told them, we'll be embarrassed. We'll be embarrassed that when the time comes, you were not ready. And you could not do anything, you could not give. We'll be embarrassed. Not to talk of your own embarrassment. That's what Paul is saying. That's what Paul is saying, because they didn't work towards readiness. They were just sitting there, um, like they didn't even think about it. No. No, that's not how you do it. They didn't even think about it. And then Sunday just comes and the partnership says, "Hey, I just remembered, um, let me get some, um, five seeds and put in the envelope." No, no, by you to why? By you to why? And I'm not just talking about Partnership Service, I'm even talking about global partners. First of all, that partner with the vision every month, you know. You've signed up every month. There has to be that readiness and enthusiasm. That is how your partnership works. Or else it will not work. It will not speak for you. Hallelujah. It says, "So I thought I should send these brothers ahead of me to make sure the gift you promised is ready. But I want it to be a willing gift, not one given grudgingly. So a willing gift out of willingness. That's what I, I just said, willingness, not compulsion, willingness. Remember this, a farmer who plants only a few seeds will get a small crop. So a few seeds, that talks about the beginning when we spoke about the extent. That's continually, continually, consistently, you consistently partner. You don't partner one, two, and you stop. You don't give one, two, no, continually. So few seeds. Now, the word "few" also talks about the size, small, little. You give something minimal. Something that you cannot even use to buy pizza, you cannot even use to buy food, you cannot use to buy, no, think. I can't give God. No, God has done so much. God has done so much. Ending of the month, I need to give something wonderful. It might not be too exciting, but it has to be interesting. Hallelujah. Says, "By the one who plants generously will get a generous crop." Amen. You must each decide in your heart how much to give. You must decide in your heart. That's the verse seven. Decide in your heart. Decide in your heart. Now, let's look at other versions. Look at NKJV. "Let each one give as he purposes." So that's it. How to prove your interest by purpose and planning. This is how much, the day hasn't come, but this is how much I'm gonna give. Lord, this is how much I'm gonna give. T P T says, "Let your giving flow from your heart, not from a sense of religious duty." So this is the number one. You know, readiness, planning. I think I've even given two points already. Readiness, that's willingness, you are willing, you cannot wait with enthusiasm. And then planning, purposeful, that this is what I'm gonna give. And you even begin to pray over it. This is what I'm gonna give, this is what I'm giving. Lord, I'm gonna give a thousand CDs. My first time giving a thousand, my first time giving two thousand CDs. Lord, maybe there's the money that I, I was given or I got. I'm gonna split it into two, or I'm gonna give ninety percent, I'm gonna give seventy percent, I'm gonna give this. It has to be something interesting, something you purpose, and you are praying over it, Makalabo, Shatalabaya, Liko Lamaya. Your heart, not a sense of religious duty, your heart. Your heart means that your all must be involved, your all. I'm gonna give this amount of dollars, I'm gonna give this, I'm gonna give that, I'm gonna partner with my boat, not a canoe. Not a half-working boat. No, I'm gonna partner with my boat. Hallelujah. What a blessing. Amplify Classic says, "Let each man give as he has made up his own mind." So mind, plan, be mindful of it. Hallelujah. Look at message. It says, "I want each of you to take plenty of time to think it over and make up your own mind what you will give." You see, people use this part and they use it wrongly. It says, "Think it over." And to make up your mind what you will give, not think it over to not give. Not think it over and don't make up your mind to give. So you think it over, eh, I will not give, I have thought it over. They say we should think over, I've thought it, no, think it over. He said that, and make up your mind what you will give. That means at all cost you have to give. You have to partner. Amen. Hallelujah. What a blessing. I wanna encourage us. This is why you need to partner. This episode is just, you know, a special session that God just led us to have. So this is just part one on why partner. And even how to partner, how to go about it, the approach and the attitude, the mindset, the posture. Hallelujah. I pray for you that you become an interested partner. Interested in sharing in the burden, the vision of God, the agenda, being a part of what God is doing in the church, in the ministry, in the body of Christ, financially, being a part financially. Hallelujah. And I pray that God will bless you, even as you partner. God will bless you. God will increase you. He will multiply and increase your fruit. You multiply and increase your seed and your fruit in the name of Jesus. From today. Purpose in your heart, plan, be ready, be willing, and as you partner. Remember, you are partnering with God so that he partners with you. That's what happened. Simon partnered with Jesus by giving him his boat, and our Jesus partnered with him by giving him a word, by giving him a word, an instruction. And when he did it, he was ushered into prosperity. I pray for you that may you be ushered into prosperity, even as you partner and you support the work of God. God bless you. I love you so much. Please make sure you subscribe, like and share this video to as many people as possible. Watch out for part two.